Half a day, the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is called to order. Today's Monday, April 8, 2021, and the time is 5:13 PM. Notices for this confirmation hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Monday, April 5, again on Friday, April 9, 2021. The notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on Monday, April 5, and again on Friday, April 9, 2021. This Zoom meeting is hosted by the Legislature's MIS staff and committee staff, and I thank them for their assistance. And the host will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by the chair. We have two agenda items. One is the appointment of Mr. Ray C. Tahaji to serve as a member, the Physician Assistant Representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners for a term of three years, April 27, 2020 to April 26, 2023. Second item on our agenda today is the reappointment of Dr. Gregory Miller to serve as a member chiropractic representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners for a term length of three years, February 21, 2021 to February 20, 2024. All right, I'd like to thank my colleagues for attending, especially my vice chair, Senator Sabina Perez. Thank you, Senator, for being here today. All right, I'm going to just very briefly remind those who are listening and those who are being confirmed today of the responsibilities of the Board of Allied Health Examiners. I know you're both being reappointed, so you're familiar with these. But I want to put on the record that what we're looking for today in today's hearing is your ability to meet these responsibilities. And so Section 12803 of Title 10, Guam Code Annotative, requires that the Board of Allied Health Examiners shall have the following powers and responsibilities, including promulgating rules and regulations, developing and adopting a budget, evaluating education and training of applicants, selecting and administering licensing examinations, evaluating previous professional performance of applicants, issuing or denying initial licenses, approving or denying applications for license renewals, receiving review and investigating reports and complaints received from law enforcement agencies, healthcare organizations, governmental agencies, insurers and other entities having information pertinent to the professional performance of licensees, disciplined licensees found in violation of the Allied Health Practice Act, and to do all other things that are necessary for you to accomplish these duties, including the power of subpoena, to enjoin actions, and to charge fees, and to have hearings, all of that. All right, so I'm going to now begin with Mr. Tahaji's appointment. Mr. Tahaji, if you would like to make any testimony or comments for the committee, please, you may proceed then.
Thank you, Senator, Terlahe and Senator Sabina, and Senators of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. My name is Ray Tahaji. For the past several years, I've had the pleasure and privilege of serving with members from different professions within the Guam Board of Allied Health. Yeah, it has been a great experience, and I've certainly had the opportunity to gain a significant amount of knowledge about the licensure process and also contribute to revision of rules and regulations as it applies to the allied health professionals. So before I turn it back to the committee, ma'am, I would like to share a little bit about myself. I've spent the better part of my 30-year career working in the medical field. First, as a Navy hospital corpsman, and this was many years ago, back in 1985 to 1989. In 1995, I graduated from University of Guam with a nursing degree and worked at G M H for three years before deciding to go on to Physician Assistant School via the Guam National Guard. So in 2000, I graduated from University of Nebraska and then pursued my career in the United States Navy, where I spent literally over eight years working in a family medicine clinic. In 2007, I returned to Guam and joined the Guam National Guard as a full-time P A, working in the 94 Civil Support Team. And just recently, in 2019, I transferred to the Medical Readiness Detachment, where I currently serve as the commander. All in all, it has been highly fulfilling and rewarding to both serve the United States and the people of Guam. So with that said, ma'am, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve on the Guam Board of Allied Health, and I appreciate your consideration for reappointment as a member of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Tahaji. How many terms have you served so far?
This will be my first, ma'am.
This is your, no, you're completing.
Yeah, completing the first, and if I got reappointed, it'll be my second.
Okay, and have you been able to experience any complaints against persons in the allied health fields? And what is your estimation of the procedures to handle those complaints? And do you feel like the board is doing an adequate job of handling those complaints?
You know, considering, well, to answer the first question, yes. For P As, I did receive a case that we handled over the course of many months. And there are challenges, right, because the board meets only once a month. So every month, when we meet for a particular case, if there's more documents that are required from either parties, we're going to have to wait another month. So, you know, there can be delays because of that. You know, and I think the biggest part is, the biggest factor is that we just don't meet more than once a month. Now, if we were able to meet more than once a month, then that would expedite the cases. And I think you're referring to the case with SDA. So are we meeting it adequately, considering the fact that, you know, we do meet once a month? I think, yes, we are.
Okay, but do you feel the board is equipped to handle the complaints? We have everything else you need if you had the meetings sufficient, or more meetings?
Right, so, well, it's always great to have a full-time support, right, in terms of handling cases like this, but we just don't have that luxury, right? You know, if you have a full-time P A on that, in that board, it would definitely expedite the cases. Now, with the lawyer, I know the lawyer, he's a busy man, and, you know, but he's always there. So I don't think we have any problems with, or any limitations with respect to that. But, you know, I think, I think, I think we're adequately, adequately equipped to definitely handle cases. It's just, again, in my opinion, one of the factors is, is meeting only once a month. It really delays, you know, cases, as you saw with that, the case that dealt with a physician assistant.
What about finances? Do you feel your finances are adequate and that you are being informed adequately of finances in order to act as necessary as a board member?
Yeah, we always get a treasurer's report, so that's readily available to us during board meetings. As far as the funding, it's always great to have more funding, right, to improve the process and make things more efficient within the Guam Board of Allied Health. So I'm not quite sure on whether we're adequate with funding, but I always think more funding is better than less funding, so I can't answer that question, ma'am.
All right, all right, I'm gonna open it up for Senator Perez to ask some questions. Mr. Tahaji, I'm not sure how long this would take, but are you able to take down your virtual background? Do you have a virtual background right now?
Oh, okay.
This will be just your image, and I just want it to be clear.
I may have to log out, ma'am, to do that? So if you want me to do that, I certainly can do that.
No, let's just proceed then. Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker, and I think you asked many of the good questions. Maybe perhaps another question would be, Mr. Tahaji, I think, are you familiar with the rules and regs? And, you know, what, do you see any areas that need improvement? I realize, I think, we just passed a new set of rules and regs, but being that you're relatively new, do you see any areas that may need improvement?
Yeah, and, you know, currently, the board, right, we meet, we do workshops on a regular basis. So our goal within those workshops is to look at the G C A and see what we can change within our own specialties, right? For instance, for P As, I look at that and say, okay, what would best serve the P As of Guam, right? So some of the things I can think of just off the bat is looking at changing, perhaps, the controlled substance limitations from schedule, I think we're currently, what, four and five, maybe two to five. That would be one change I would recommend. The other thing, maybe the collaborative practice agreement. This is something that I've been talking with amongst the P A community here in Guam to see, get a pulse on whether or not that's something that we want to tackle and to see whether or not we should continue our request to fulfill the CPA, the collaborative practice agreement. There's a couple of things, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So what's the issue with the collaborative practice agreement?
Okay, so if you don't know, the nurse practitioners were able to get their CPA removed from the requirements for licensure. So the collaborative practice agreement, in our case, we need a supervising physician. So that's what it basically involves. So if I were to work at, like, three different clinics, I would have to submit three different collaborative practices agreements with all the supervising physicians that I work with. They need to sign that, so, you know, it can be tedious. And that's basically the gist of the CPA.
Oh, great, yeah, thank you for that. So what is the issue? So the other thing you mentioned was changing controlled substance four to five, from four to five to two to five. What is that?
Yeah, so, so controlled substances, those are narcotics, right? So it allows us, you know, a larger scope of prescribing authority with respect to controlled substances. So for instance, you know, we can prescribe, if we go controlled substance two, we can prescribe something with codeine in it. In this case, currently, we can't do that. We only can do controlled substance fours and fives.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Yeah, I don't have further questions other than what I've seen. And I did, I did look over your resume, and it shows that you have no conflict of interest. And I do appreciate you coming back to Guam and continuing your service. That's just massive. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Tahaji, did your term expire in April 2020, and have you been serving on the board since then?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
All right, all right, well, we just received your nomination. Well, okay, so April 2020. Okay. All right. Has your attendance at the meetings been regular? Have you seen any, any problem with your current work duties versus your duties on the board?
Right, so there are times that I do go T D Y, so I have to go off-island for training. So the National Guard, you know, we don't have their training event here. We have to go off-island to conduct that, so that's the only, that's the only drawback of me being in the National Guard, right, full-time. The other thing is, if I do get deployed, that definitely might be an issue because, you know, we get deployed at least six months, six months to a year at the most. But currently, I don't, I don't see anything, there's nothing going on in the world that would make me think that we're going to get deployed within the next year or so.
All right, have you seen any, or have you had any business conflicts? Or do you feel like any of the work that you're doing is inhibiting your participation in certain matters on the board?
No, in fact, before I took this position, when we first started, I ensured that I went through our legal. That's the National Guard's legal department, and they said that there's no conflict of interest.
Where do you work now?
Now, I work in the Medical Readiness Detachment, I'm currently the commander for that unit.
Okay, and that's your full-time, okay, all right. Has the board made any efforts to better address vulnerable populations or in the different professions that the allied board covers?
Ma'am, you're breaking up. Can you repeat your question?
Yeah, has the Allied Health Board, while you've been there, made any efforts to better address vulnerable populations or implement any programs that might help those to prevent this, you know, bad service, maybe, for those people? Or to improve service for those people from the allied health professions, for the vulnerable populations?
Vulnerable, is that what you said?
Yes.
Vulnerable populations. Can you elaborate on vulnerable populations?
Well, normally, vulnerable population, well, it can, you know, it's weird. I'm talking for myself about those who are poor, the poor, who don't necessarily have access to lawyers, or those who don't have access to regular care, or a lot of time because of poverty, or they are just living in conditions that don't make, you know, it easy to come before a board or to, yeah, make complaints before a board against practicing.
Oh, I see. Man, I can't think of a scenario or an example of any individual or group that was having any difficulty coming to the board, ma'am. So I don't think I have any example at all, you know.
Okay, okay, Mr. Tahaji. When, when they conducted an investigation, you talked about it recently on a physician's assistant. Were you, was there another expert that was involved in that? Or were you the expert that was involved in that? Because you are the physician assistant on the board.
Right, so I always sought any legal advice from, of course, Attorney Weinberg. So he was there, as well as Dr. Balajaja. So we would talk about the case together. And then, you know, as we came closer to gathering all the data and whatnot, that was presented to the entire board for discussion.
Have you participated in any hearings, like hearings on the complaint? Like a formal hearing where the person who is complained against is present and the person who is making the complaint is present?
Well, if, I know with that particular case, ma'am, I did interview both, both parties, several occasions. I know with the, with one of the parties, they certainly had several, they were at our board, actually, and they were, they had several comments to make with respect to that case. But no legislative hearings that I can.
No, formal hearings with, like, with a hearing officer?
No.
Where the board hires a hearings officer to.
No, ma'am.
Have you worked with an investigator on any cases? Is it your experience that the board has hired an investigator and is working with an investigator on some of these complaints?
Not with that case, ma'am, there was no investigator that was hired.
Okay, but are you, as a member of the board, exposed to any other cases besides that one or those two?
No, no, not at all.
All right then, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tahaji, I'm not sure, are you able to hold on while we talk to Dr. Miller in case we have any other questions we want to come back to with you?
Sure, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Very much, thank you. So we'll move now to the second item on the agenda, which is the reappointment of Dr. Gregory Miller to serve as a member chiropractic representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners.
Oh, thank you, first of all, Chair.
Dr. Miller, this looks like it is your fourth appointment, fourth term, is that correct?
I had several terms even way back in the eighties.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you for some reason. Try again.
Can you hear me better now?
It's very distorted.
Okay, maybe Cauci can take care of that. Let's keep talking, we'll see how it goes. Is it better?
I can hear you a little bit, but I can't make out what you're saying, so it's something.
I think the connection, check your connection, because it comes in clearer sometimes.
Yeah, it's good. As I switch to my phone, I could do that. Is it any better? No, I can't hear, you guys are muted. So I'm not sure what to do. I'm not an IT guy.
Okay, audio, do you have any recommendations? Keep talking, Dr. Miller, you come in and out once in a while, and there's something, yeah, maybe.
Let me change positions. I'm at the table with my Wi-Fi repeater at my back, maybe I'm blocking it. Yeah, I'm at a different position.
That works. I think that works.
Oh, ma'am, that's cool.
Okay, all right. Before I hear your testimony, Mr. Miller, I'd like to confirm that you have, this is your fourth appointment, do we have that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so please proceed, if you've got any comments or testimony.
I'll introduce myself. Again, first glad to just start it fairly good. Thank you so much for having a five o'clock here.
I'm sorry, wait a minute, wait a minute, yeah, no, that's not working.
Hi, Speaker, this is Takashi from AV. Would you like me to assist him?
Please, please.
Okay. Dr. Miller, remember when we first started, when we got into the Zoom? Yes, if you can go down to the bottom left and open up that little arrow next to the microphone icon?
Okay.
And go to audio settings?
Got it.
And from there, if you see the check mark or the box for automatically adjust microphone volume?
Right.
What do you see there?
It's blank, it's not checked.
And then your volume level for your microphone, could you try making it a little louder?
No, it's at 100%, I just increased it.
Okay, and then, do you see any other settings in there, below the microphone settings?
You have separate audio device, automatically join audio.
And then, on your advanced settings, do you see anything in there? Can you let me know what you see in there?
Suppress background noises on auto, suppress background.
Yeah, so suppress background noise, can you set that to low? Can you try setting that to low and then apply your settings?
Okay, auto, this is disabled.
Yeah, can you try disabling that?
Okay, that'll set it right.
Yes.
All right, echo cancellation.
Echo cancellation, you can leave that on auto as well.
So try this.
Yes, can you give us a?
I'll come in here for you.
Okay, it doesn't seem to have fixed that. So on your suppress background noise settings, could you just put that back to auto for now? Because I don't think that's affecting the microphone.
There's another option, I can switch to my iPhone.
Speaker, what would you prefer? Would you like to continue or have him use another microphone?
Doctor, oh, yes, try another microphone. I can't hear him at all. I mean, it's very unclear.
Okay, he's gonna try logging in through his phone.
All right. All right, well, Miss. Are we able to take a short recess? Before we, before we recess, let me go ahead and excuse Mr. Tahaji and thank you, Mr. Tahaji, for your work on the board and your continued willingness to be appointed to this board. I ask you to help us in helping the board in improving its handling of complaints to make sure that they are timely, to make sure that they are thorough and professional. We've been promised that they would be handled by an investigator, formal procedures, and then that a different hearings officer would be made available to the boards and that the boards were paying for these, well, or else from the AG's office. And then, and that, that was the forward in regard to complaints, and so that they could be fairly adjudicated and promptly adjudicated. And I'm not satisfied at this point that the board is, you know, handling all of these complaints as properly as they could be. And there are complaints that we have received here about that. And so I want you to follow up regarding the finances of the board. Make sure that you can account for where that's going, whether you agree that you are getting the services that you are paying for and that you need in order to especially adjudicate complaints against persons. Because you are the only people on Guam that really can do that. I can't adjudicate against a doctor or an allied. I can't adjudicate against a doctor or an allied health professional. Only you can. And so we are relying on you to do that, and you need to determine whether you have everything available and necessary to do that as a board. And if not, that that you get that in any way necessary so that those can be prompt. But, Dr. Miller, let's try hearing from you one more time, and if it works, maybe Mr. Tahaji won't mind holding on.
I'm on my iPhone now. Is this better?
Much better.
Okay, great. Okay, so I guess I can skip the formalities, but I was thanking you for the 5:00 PM hearing because it just made my life so much easier. So that's much appreciated. But my name is Dr. Greg Miller. I'm a doctor chiropractor. I believe I believe I'm approaching forty years of practice, thirty-six of that on Guam. And many of those years off and on, I've spent on the Allied Health Board, so I can answer a lot of the questions, I hope, that you have. I could go on, but you wanted to ask specific questions?
Please go on about your own experience.
Well, you know, I've been on Guam for thirty-six years. I've been with Allied Health through the Bernalio administration, Olga Teres administration, part of the Ad administration, and then Camacho changed that whole board. So I was off the board for eight years, and then I was requested to come back on. I will say something about that, too. Allied Health is a very unique board in that there's fifteen professions. And when you serve on that board, you can't just serve as the chiropractor, overlook at the chiropractor. You have to know everybody's rules and regulations. And I think sometimes in the press, the Allied Health Board is kind of a hotspot because there is fifteen professions. You know, medical, dental, optometry, et cetera, only have one profession per board, and all those board members are from that group. And so it's much easier to adjudicate than it is at Allied Health. So I think we get more than our share of complaints. I do see a problem. You were asking Rachel Tahaji about finances. Currently, it goes back to Attorney General Elizabeth Barrett Anderson. She made the decision to, in her budget, to give us a legal counsel at meetings. That would be Attorney Weinberg. But when we prosecute, we used to use the AG's office, and we no longer have the AG's office to prosecute for us. Therefore, we have to have a budget for attorneys to do our prosecution. And we got a little bit of money, and they're trying to wrap up a few of these complaints right now as we speak. But to do what we would need to do, we would need a pretty big budget for legal fees, and we do not have any investigator at all. There's no professional investigator that works with that board. And that would be really nice to have because it would especially they would get the steps of the investigation right, so it would hold up in court. So that's I think that's the big issue really with Allied Health is if somebody files a complaint and if there is a violation of law and Attorney Weinberg says you have to move forward, when we get to the point of prosecution, then we have to stop until money is made available to hire the attorney. So we're kind of hamstrung, really, to tell you the truth, in that particular case. Also, change the subject just slightly. You asked Major Tahaji about what you think we could do to help with underserved population. I think that's a great idea, and I think the Allied Health Board can really serve in that capacity very well. For instance, he had mentioned how the nurse practitioners no longer have a collaborative practice agreement, and I think their prescription privileges are two through five with the schedules. If we expanded all of our professions and brought all their laws up to date, then, for instance, you would have PAs who are a little bit more independent. That brings down the price a lot. And if you see these big stores moving into Guam, like, for instance, in Walmart, they usually have PAs working in the store as their walk-in clinics. And right now, that would not be very easy to do because of the collaborative practice agreements. Also, we're working on our different professions because most of the rules and regulations that we're using right now and our statutes are antiquated. They were promulgated in the nineties. I was on the group that promulgated most of these for these professions. But quite frankly, healthcare changes rapidly, but our our statutes and our regulations need updating. So that's being worked on. Just today, I attended a Zoom meeting, and we had just finished changing our continuing education requirements for all of our licenses. And it was quite involved because you have all these different tiers. So you know, we have foot surgeons all the way down to physical therapy assistants. So there's all kinds of things we have to take into account. But that's gonna be presented, and then all the professions are asked to go through their rules and regulations and seek what they want to change and also our statutes. There's gonna be a few, no major statutory changes, just tweaks in wording that might allow, for instance, things like ordering labs. Maybe, again, if the physicians assistants wanted the law changed so they could do Schedule Two and Schedule Three, that would be very beneficial. And I believe the way that's going to be designed, it's going to come through as one document for all the professions. So we're working pretty hard. It's a hardworking board. It's well populated, too. We have fifteen members. And to my knowledge, in the eight years I've been back on that board, we've never missed a meeting for lack of form. So these people are working hard, and it's quite a bit of work because you have to understand fourteen other professions.
Well, Dr. Miller, thank you for that. That is very helpful. And, yeah, right, I'm very glad that they are looking at the rules and regulations because, yes, I've been asking about that. And so that I hope we can update whatever is necessary, and especially when you tie it to serving vulnerable populations and expanding service or access to service. That's fantastic. That's great news. So I hope I'm looking forward to seeing those soon, and please let me know if you need any help with it or you need just any any guidance as you go along. I know you have an attorney working with you on that, so that's that's excellent. I'm glad I know this board is very unique with the different professions, completely different professions all together, working together. It's very, it is very unusual, I think. So but I always find it very interesting how you get things done and that they have been quite consistent and active. So I'm glad for that. As to the money, well, having no investigator at all, are you familiar with the finances? Do you believe that you are briefed on the finances? And are you are you able to understand why you do not have enough money to hire an investigator, for example, or anything like that, especially you've got fifteen professions all being licensed? And all the licensing fees from all of those professions are supposed to be going towards your board?
Well, now, I'm not the professional on the financial part. To answer the first part of your question, yes, we have one of our board members, just the treasurer, and then she gets from HPLO a fine report. She'll deliver that to the board usually every month if there is a new report available. But that's been very consistent the last three or four years. So we're happy about that. That's Catherine Saint Nicholas. She takes care of that. But there's two parts. With the money we get from our renewals and our initial applications, first of all, that the fees have not been changed for, gosh, I think probably over twenty-five years. And the current administration wants us to raise fees, and so that's going to be part of that's regulatory change. So that's going to be part of that package. So when that money starts to come in, what we're hoping is we will keep it. So I'm not a government guy, but I'm pretty sure it's a bureau of budget likes to kind of transfer our money around so we don't always have what we think we should have. So that can be a problem because I think it can be taken into the general fund. A little bit over my head on this, but that's that's the story we hear all the time. It was there, but it's gone, you know?
Right, but that's the that's the problem I'm having with these boards as well. I feel like that's not supposed to be happening, and so if it is happening, you really need to be on top of that. You need to be vocal about it. You need to say no because otherwise it impairs your ability to process complaints promptly, and we can't have that anymore. You just absolutely cannot have that. So you've got to do something to, if not stop that, to expose that, I think. I I don't see any authority when we make an appropriation to the boards. We're making an appropriation to the HPLO. But the law right now says that you are entitled to your licensing fees. So the appropriation that we are making is what's the balance that we see, and we appropriated out based on the fees that you have brought in. So so you should be demanding access to the amounts that you are bringing in at the very least. And if you find those not to be enough, then consider raising fees. But I guess I want to ask, so what else are you working on that is being requested by the administration versus being seen as a need by the board itself or, you know, prompted by the board's own observations?
Well, I think with the administration, as far as I know, you might want to double-check this with Dr. Balahadji. What Enziniya from HPLO is what I remember directly from the administration was raise your fees. I think they told that to almost all the boards, just as a way of raising more money. The fee schedule is antiquated. I'll give you an example. I'm also currently licensed in Washington State. It's a yearly renewal at just under $600 a year. My renewal in Guam is $100 every two years. And it's, you know, it's 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 just not enough. It's not enough to run an office, that's for sure. So those all need to be updated. Of course, there'll be pushback from professionals. Nobody likes to spend money, but that's part of your privilege of practicing is you have to keep your license ready to go, and you have to be able to help fund the boards. The board can keep those licenses perfected and protect the public, basically. The other things we're working on, there's the statutory changes are minor. I don't think there's anything controversial in it, but we're with all these professions that really haven't had any change in their laws or their regulations, significant changes since the inception of the licensure. You just I think the legislature finished something recently with speech and language pathology. But chiropractic is just small changes. Acupuncture wants some changes. And what these changes I'm talking about are just things that update our laws. So and this is really important so that our, for instance, our local students who go away, say, to chiropractic college, as they get close to graduation after eight years of college, they look at our law and say, I don't want to practice there. It's too restrictive. It's not updated, and so they stay in the States. That's one of the reasons. And that I think can hold true even like if you look at physician assistants where their major problem, in my opinion, is they're hamstrung by their prescription authority. They need to be able to do Schedule Two and Schedule Three. Otherwise, most of the stuff, the other schedules, four and five, you can get it Rexall, you know? So it it's not allowing them to use all their talents. And that's what I think a lot of our locals who go away to school, they want to come back and serve their community at a higher level of their talents. And it's not that our laws are restrictive. Our laws are just old and they reflected the paradigm at that time. So that's being worked on. We had the meeting today. And then I think probably by the end of this year, we'll actually introduce the statutory changes, and then we'll go through the administrative adjudication for the rules and regulations. So there's a lot going on, actually.
Okay, all right. End of this year, that's several months from now, at least.
We're hoping. But well, I think what's going to happen is, so we have this work group that I'm a part of. It's not an official meeting. We work outside of the meeting, and then we're putting together the big document. It might get slowed down because the other. Oh, the fiscal year. Well, the members that are not in these committees that are meeting like at lunchtime twice a month, they'll have to have time to digest. It'll be a very big document, so that might take a couple of months. But we all know nothing moves very fast when it comes to legislation, and it's better to get it right, to hurry it through.
Okay, I remember when I first was elected a senator, one of or not a senator, but when I first became the health chair committee, one of the first meetings I had was with the pharmacy board, and one of the first things they asked was to raise their fees. So I asked them, you know, to get the board's consensus on a draft. I think I even might have drafted it or something or just what the fees were going to be raised to. And I've not heard back from them since then, and unfortunately. But I am I am willing to help in these regards, and I would suggest, I don't, you know, your counsel will advise you, but if you need to do it piecemeal, do it piecemeal as opposed to having it wait for, you know, a year longer or anything like that, especially if there is a need. And I would I would, at this point, make a determination. If you are able to adequately investigate complaints, and if not, that is a need that you need to address right away. And so do whatever it takes to address that need, and then and then everything else can come in pieces if it has to. It's not necessary to come in one big package. I don't necessarily think that makes it easier down here. That's my perspective. That, you know, if we might, we might have controversy on, you know, the chiropractic issue as opposed to all the other issues. Divide them up, and let's update them one by one if if they're ready, if they're ready. But I understand the process however you think is, but that's just my suggestions. Senator Sabina.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, I think this is very interesting conversation, and thank you, Dr. Miller, for such an apprehensive response. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to the changes, and I agree, I concur with the speaker that, yeah, smaller smaller packages are better than one large whole package. And, yeah, if you can address those issues, and I think there's another bill that was supposed to address the issue regarding, you know, how to deal with, you know, investigating your own colleagues, right? I think that's one of the one of the big issues. And, yeah, you know, what is your, I guess, insight into that as far as addressing that issue?
It's difficult, Senator, because I'll give you, for instance, currently Guam is short of podiatrists, the foot surgeons, right? That's a separate license. They're part of Allied Health. A complaint was filed against one of the local podiatrists, but we can't find anybody, any other podiatrist on Guam who would want to testify, review the case and testify whether or not he did something wrong or whether or not it was just a bad outcome. So then our next step was we were able to identify through renewals that we actually have three podiatrists who no longer practice on Guam, but they're practiced in the States, but they're still Guam licensed. So we have approached all three of them, and none of them will testify. So that's kind of our problem with our small community is it's kind of hard to get second opinions in if the second opinion is going to cause turmoil amongst a very small group of like podiatrists or even chiropractic. There's only like eight clinics here, and you see that kind of all around. So I'm not sure, you know, if we can hire, like, for instance, a forensic podiatrist to go over this case, that would be somebody in the States who does that professionally, but that comes at a very large cost. And those are available for all the professions, but sometimes there's just not the money.
How much is that? How much would it cost to hire forensic podiatrists? If that's the expedient way to handle these complaints?
Oh, I could only speculate, Senator, but I would imagine it'd be probably tens of thousands of dollars because they're going to want to copy the file, and they'll certainly take their time, especially if they're paid by the hour. It's like expert witnesses in court cases, you know, they get paid so much per hour. They get paid for copy, and they 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 just rack up a whole bill, you know? But again, this is speculation. I have no idea how much it costs. On the other hand, like in this particular complaint against a podiatrist, it's a really simple complaint. Really, it has to do, in my opinion, bedside manner, and a lot of it can just be resolved. But you just got to be able to work through these things. Now, I've been through all the public hearings for the veterinary medicine hearings, and it's it's exhaustive. Now, I've been through all the public hearings for the veterinary medicine hearings, and it's exhaustive. The, the Allied Health, when we did the veterinary medicine one several years ago, we were being accused that we kept losing the case. But actually, what it was, was the Open Meeting Act and the way we advertised our meetings. One of the judges, I won't say who it was, kept saying that we didn't word it right, so he kept throwing it out of court. But they wouldn't say what was wrong with the wording. And I think we've got it down pretty well now. I can remember there were sometimes we didn't have the two hundred dollars to run the ad in the Guam Post. And so, or if the purchase order was a couple hours late, you missed the deadline for that day, but then you have to meet the certain days. So we ran into stuff like that, and again, it goes back to money, really. If you have money on hand, then you can get your purchase order and get it on in the paper. Actually, can I diverge just a second since we're talking about that? Several years ago, when Senator Cruz was speaker, I went to him about the Open Meeting Act because we kept having problems getting the wording right. And it had to be in the newspaper. I think it's two days and five days. And I asked him, I said, why can't we just have govguammeetings.com? And then the online scheduled meetings, you'd have to change the law, would be the actual official announcement of all the meetings. And then you just have a webmaster for all of GovGuam, including Allied Health, post these meetings. Unfortunately, one of the newspapers got involved with it, and they changed the word. It would say to be on govguammeetings.com or newspapers of general publications. And they changed the word "or" to "and." So they actually made it worse. And we're stuck there now. If you talk to Senator Cruz, he's the auditor now, but he'll tell you about that. But I still think that would be, that would solve a lot of problems. And when I had the discussion with him, he was saying that just the legislature alone, one of you should know this. He said, we were able to do the Open Meeting Act and announce meetings online. He said, it would save several million dollars just for the legislature, but it would save GovGuam a lot of millions of dollars. Now, it would make our two newspapers pretty upset, but times are changing, you know? So something to think about. I didn't mean to go down that path, but I think that's very important because when we had our public hearings in the veterinary medicine part, that's where we got hung up. It was the wording of our announcement, or if we didn't have the money, and we came up with the money like after four o'clock, it was too late to put it in the paper, stuff like that kept happening. And it was a little bit embarrassing for the board. And of course, when the veterinary would go out and make the big announcement, we can't refute that. We don't go on the Ray Gibson Show and give ourselves a story. That's a big no-no. You just let it lie. So something to think about, you know? If you see former Speaker Cruz, ask him about that. Maybe that might be something you might want to entertain. Where we have, excuse me, a website for the Open Meeting Act. And the website becomes the depository, the go-to official place for all of GovGuam meetings. There was an argument they tried to put up, saying that more people have access to the two newspapers than do to the online media. I don't think that holds true. If you were to ask both DelcoMo and GTA, how many smartphones do they have in operation right now? I'm sure it's a lot more than both newspapers combines daily circulation. So I'm speculating, but I don't believe that argument. They were talking about monopolists may not be able to manipulate it, but some monopolists can't read a newspaper because, you know, I'm a monopolist now. My eyes get kind of bad, right? So a lot of those are just your typical arguments. But I think, like the other things, is times are changing. So if we implement certain changes, like when you have a website for the Open Meeting Act, and that is, of course, that wouldn't cost anything. You would have a webmaster. You're gonna save the government a lot of, anyway, I'm diverging.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Miller. Just maybe one more question. What is the role, do you think, of the Allied Health to, for preventive medicine?
I think it's a very strong role because we have the fifteen professions, for instance, chiropractic, for instance, I'm speaking for myself now. We're not, excuse me, we're not just musculoskeletal. We do a lot of wellness cares. One of the more popular weight loss clinics on Guam is actually one by a chiropractor, and he's very successful. That's Dr. DiMolata. I'm in his program right now, and my A1C has come back to normal. Physical therapy, they're now not just physical therapists, they're doctors of physical therapy. Audiology are now doctors of audiology, and that's, those are the changes we have to adapt to. And that also means their scope of practice expands just a little bit more. And when you have all these allied health professions ready to step in, where primary care is just too busy to address these things. Like, I'll give you, for instance, I think it depends on the doctor, but it used to be when you went to your primary care doctor, you say, no, I think my ear is plugged with wax. Can you, can you wash it out? They would wash it out. Few doctors have time to do that now. They'll say, well, we're gonna send you to the specialist in your nose and throat, but the specialist is backed up by months because there's only one of them. Great guy, love that guy. But do you really need a specialist just to lavage an ear? See, that could be done by audiology if we allow it. Again, going back to physician assistant, if they had more freedom and the right prescriptive authority as far as the schedules of drugs, then people would have more access, especially in just the day-to-day fevers and flus and sprained ankles and stuff like that. It would be very expedient, and it would lower the cost of healthcare. That could go on and on each profession, but it's the same for all of them.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Miller. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Dr. Miller, I just wanted, on your diversion about the open government website, I wanted to let you know, yes, we did pass a law that mandated one. And we've been following up, and we've been told almost every time that it's not as easy as it sounds, and they were not able to do one. But of course, during the pandemic, we saw the government, the governor's executive order mandate that all notices will be posted on the Attorney General's website. So they've been able to do that. And so now, I guess, we just need to determine whether that will be our permanent open government website, whether it's sufficient or whether we need a separate one, and whether, yeah, internet access for everyone is enough now to convert to, that's all we need to do versus, you know, all the publications. So I think, I think it's definitely-
That's good. I have a question about it, though. Does that new law say that you can use that particular website as the official website? Or newspapers and general publication? Because what happened is, we designed it, and then the, those people from a certain newspaper lobbied and got that word changed to "and." And so, I mean, we, I hate the fact that that would hurt their business, but you were talking about finances of the board. One of our major expenditures is buying the ads.
Yes.
That's very expensive.
Because I'm one of the few senators that publishes the ads. But I agree. I think right now it's still at "and," and I'm saying, because they were telling us for years that they were not able to provide one website that would do that. But now that they have proven that it is possible, and definitely, you know, it's possible. And so I think, yeah, it's time to reconsider that. It's one of those things that the pandemic forced, you know, electronic transmittals- publication, and so we, hopefully, I just wanna, I just wanna verify, you know, how much of our community, when they get this education, you know, the technology out to the students, to the homes supposedly, and to the villages, whether then it is sufficient. That might be the perfect time to then switch from an "and" to an "or," and we'll see. Right? And I know Senator Sabina, she's been working on that also, how much of the technology has got to the villages because her oversight at revenue and taxation also requires online for many things in order to participate. So we're seeing it to become the norm, and we, yeah, so we'll follow up on that, Dr. Miller. And so you can use your money for the investigators and other things that you need as well. Mr. Tohaji, because you waited with us, I want to thank you. And I heard Dr. Miller call you major, so I apologize if I should have been referring to you as that. My apologies.
No, no, not at all, ma'am. I'm actually a lieutenant colonel, but, yeah, that's, that's fine, Dr. Miller. Ma'am, if I, no, no, no problem at all. No problem at all. Ma'am, if I may, just do a plug in on the controlled substances. So Guam is, the PAs are only limited to four and five. So we have a CST PA, right? The civil support team, they deal with hazmat, so weapons of mass destruction. So there are drugs that were, in that particular unit, they're supposed to maintain. So things like diazepam. And diazepam is a Schedule II. And because Guam only allows PAs to prescribe four and five, it limits that unit's ability to have that particular drug in stock. So that's a, that's a big problem. Because if you don't know, ma'am, diazepam is utilized for nerve agent treatment. So in the event Guam, you know, hopefully not, knock on wood, were to encounter, you know, some WMD event that involved nerve agents, we would not be able to utilize that particular drug because of that particular limitation. So I thought I'd add that on in hopes that that will, in the future, hopefully, we can get that particular law changed.
Do you expect that that is controversial with the physicians, Mr. Tohaji? Because, yeah, like you said, it's been passed for the nurse practitioners, so what do you think? Do you find that that might have controversy?
It can, it can be, but there's many, many states now allow PAs to prescribe Schedule II to V. So, but I don't know what the feeling is for the physicians here on Guam, but it can be definitely a controversy.
Definitely follow up on that. That sounds very reasonable to me, and I will follow up. And I just think it's a matter that no one has requested it. So now that you both have made that public, very easy to follow up on that. So thank you. And again, thank you both for your willingness to serve on this board. Thank you for your many years, Dr. Miller, and your very good suggestions today. I hope, yeah, you, send it to us anytime, any suggestions that you might have that we can address immediately. We're in for a short term, shorter than both of your terms. So if you've got anything that we can do while we are here, please send it to us, and so that we can get it done right away. That's why I say, send us those rules piecemeal. Let's take care of one field at a time if we have to, or whatever we can do. And for me, I really want to prioritize handling of complaints. So whatever it is that you need to handle complaints, let's please make sure that we do that. All right. There's no other testimonies. Senator Perez, any other questions? All right. Well, then, thank you both, and we'd like to consider both of your confirmations heard. And we wish you the best in your continued service on these boards. We will probably prepare a committee report and put these nominations on the fire, I mean, on the floor in the next session. And so there will probably be a vote up or down on your confirmations at the end, at the last week of April. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sixteen PM, and this hearing is now adjourned. It's a must.